May I try to say something so I can make sure? Can you say something in the mic?
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we're good.
We trying to get full screen?
Yeah, but... No, this is not it.
Alright, I think we're live though, right?
Yeah, we're live.
Alright. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna call our meeting to order, it's about six oh five. Please continue eating. I welcome our Cumberland County Legislative Delegate here in our region to represent Hope Mills. I welcome each one of you for coming. Senator Tom Phillips, Senator Val Appleworth.
McGillis.
McGillis. Got it, got it right.
If you give me his salary, I'll take the money.
Yeah. Representative Francis Vanel Jackson and Diane Whitley will be here momentarily, at least if we think so. Okay?
And Amy.
Oh, I did get you. I did get you. Senator Val Appleworth. So I got called up over here with Tom, I think that's what it was. He tried to get me, I moved around too quick. Alright, Chancellor George. Oh, wait a minute, I got pledge allegiance, everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution and justice for all. Thank you, please repeat.
Alright, now I think we're complete. Now that we've got Representative Diane Whitley with us. Moment in remarks, I'd like to again welcome our delegation to come. What we're doing tonight is something that we haven't done before, is have an open meeting with the board, with some of our staffers here, and each of you to come in and view some of the priorities of what we're looking for as a community over the next year. And I do, when I say community, I mean community. Because it's gonna help just everybody that lives in our community. But as we look at the priorities that you're about to see tonight, I want you to think about these three questions. Why North Carolina? Why Cumberland County? And why Hope Mills? Now, those three questions are key to the population growth that we continue to see in North Carolina. Ninth, growth state. In the coming years, we're looking at either being seventh or sixth. Why are more people moving to North Carolina? Why North Carolina? Then we come down to our local level. Why Cumberland County? Why the counties that surround Cumberland County? Why Moore? Why Robinson? Why Blade? Why Hope? Why Cumberland? What is it about our region that attracts people to come to here and not go other places? And then I bring in home local. Why Hope Mills? Why do people want to come and live in Hope Mills? The number two municipality is Cumberland County. Why? Why North Carolina? Why Cumberland County? Why Hope Mills? And as we go through these priorities tonight, hopefully, some of these, these questions will be answered with the why. Because of culture, people, amenity. And you'll find one big word tonight, it's all about this one word, community. But that's it all. We're one, we're a solid community at the state level, at the county level, and at the municipality level. We're made up of nine municipalities throughout Cumberland County, and each one is unique in terms of their areas. We have more and more people that are looking to live here in Hope Mills, raise their families in Hope Mills, retire in Hope Mills, like I did, my family, in two thousand and thirteen. And why do people want to stay here? Why do they want to live here? That's the why. And the decisions that are made by our elected officials helps everyone answer that question of why. So I just wanted to have, just to plant that seed a little bit with those three questions as we go through everything tonight. We're not rebranding anything per se. We're just trying to fund a lot of community projects that a lot of people have moved here and believe in Hope Mills and want to stay here. That's pretty much what we're doing. You're gonna see them come from three different sections tonight. One of them is parks and recreation. One of them is infrastructure. And another one is transportation. And all three work in concert with our Hope Mills community and Cumberland County, City of Fayetteville, and the other municipality. They all work in concert. So you're gonna see some priorities come from those three. Lastly, we kicked off something this year with a budget process back in January to get out in front. And we had our department heads in this very room present their needs for their departments for this year. And we looked at it early in January. Tonight's meeting is a continuation of that process that we started in January. Because we knew that it was gonna be a six-month process of looking and identifying the needs of the town that represents the needs and desires of our citizens of Hope Mills. That's where that balances when we look. So we've had at our departments, we've had our board meeting as well, the board priorities. After tonight, the first meeting in March, we'll have our committees will present to the board their budgets. And then March seventh, it all culminates together in this room for what we call the Budget Workshop. Where we ask the hard questions, have some hard discussions on what priorities we're gonna fund for the next operating year in Hope Mills. Now, we can't do it by ourselves. We're a limited amount of money that we have here in the community. There's some projects that we've got ongoing. There's some state funding that helped our project. And we are thankful and appreciate every bit of resources that we get from our state legislators, legislative representatives, which really are. So, hang out with us tonight, enjoy a nice meal. And Chancellor's gonna kick it off, and then at the end, we'll have some time for some step-by-step. Again, we thank you, Chancellor George.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow board members, senators and representatives, I want to thank you guys for coming out this evening for the twenty twenty-four Town Hope Mills Delegates Dinner. We appreciate you guys taking time out of your schedules to listen to the presentation from the Town of Hope Mills. You'll hear several reoccurring themes tonight, but I want to begin with the fact that vision plus growth plus engagement equals facilitation. There's a famous quote that says, "The key is not to prioritize what's on your schedule, but to schedule your priorities." But let's begin, what is a priority? What's dictionary defines it as? "The fact or condition of being regarded or treated as more important." A thing that is regarded as more important than another, the right to take precedent or to persecute or whatever. In terms of setting your priorities, you deal with municipal guidelines. Setting priorities allows for program alignment to community desires to ensure that funding programs that meet community needs. A successful budget process should begin with city articulating a clear vision. This allows for community and department goals to be identified while creating a strategic plan that will help to mitigate conflict and go. An important part of setting these priorities though is to engage the representatives at a local and state level, which is what we're doing this evening. What you also hear repeated throughout this presentation is time to self-sufficiency. When we first began this approach, the first thing we identified is what are we doing for ourselves? Before we can come to you to ask you for your assistance, we wanted to make sure we identified the things that we can do for ourselves. And so, with the tax increase, we are exploring the possibility of a tax increase with the change in the tax structure between the Town of Hope Mills or municipalities and counties. We are exploring that possibility. We're also in the middle of concluding a pay study that we're coordinating. And this is coming with the goal of increasing salary swap for its responders. We're also doing something that's very unique. We're one of the first, I think we are the first municipality in Cumberland County to engage the legal municipalities with the Municipal Accounting Services, Cybersecurity, and Technical Assistance Grant Program. It's a very, very important program. We were in the process of asking for the creation of a grants division or grant position. And we found out about this program that offers thirty thousand and billable hours towards identifying, securing, and maintaining grant programs, grants for the Town of Hope Mills or any municipality that is in. And that's something that we're doing. We're creating what I would consider a multi-pronged approach. We're attacking this in a lot of different ways. Tonight is one approach, is one layer, but there's a lot of different layers to this in terms of what we're trying to do to help raise the standard of living for the Town of Hope Mills. So, as the Mayor mentioned in January, we did the priorities that we went elected and department heads. This was unique because they had never been done before here in the Town of Hope Mills. It was unique and vital for several reasons. It provided elected officials with a unique opportunity to base their priorities for the year directly rooted in the needs of the department. It set the framework of key projects and initiatives in a way that guides the budget process. It allowed for the priorities that were set to be tied to the services that are provided to the citizens that we serve. And it also aids in the agenting and formulating the vision for the town in a way that has never been done before in the Town of Hope Mills. So out of that priorities dinner, they came back to us with the top three priorities that we opted into this evening. Parks and Recreation, as stated, infrastructure and transportation. In terms of Parks and Recreation, programs offered by Parks and Rec increase what I consider the quality of life for Hope Mills. The completion of the Golf Course Master Plan, its paramount achievement, this though, along with the completion of Harriet's Park Base Two. And one of the most important elements that you will see to this evening is our proposed senior center. In terms of infrastructure, as our streets are the backbone and foundation that our town stands on and improvements to our infrastructure remains one of our top priorities as well. Transportation, the town is exploring the possibility of an internal transportation system that would tie into a proposed cross-town bus that would tie in with the fast system in the city of Harriet. So let's get the moving for the next three priorities. What you see now is a rendering of the overall Hope Mills Golf Course Master Plan. This contemplates the development of our ninety-nine acre property off of Goffey Drive, Goffey Road. And it does have several elements that make up the entire master plan. From passive park elements that include the expansion of coupons, the preservation of existing wetland areas, an amphitheater. What is out there now is what we consider the Goffey Greenway. This master plan contemplates the enhancement of that with additional trails, a skate park. As I said before, you'll have our senior center and what I would consider an economic generator sports complex. But, back to what I said before, what are we doing for ourselves? Well, part of the senior facility is greenlighting something that's going right now, which is the relocation of our tennis courts on this campus right now. When approaching this phase of the Golf Course Master Plan, we get, again, we're exploring the option of utilizing our funds that we currently have to address that existing and growing need directly tied to our senior facilities. Pickleball, I'm pretty sure everyone's aware, I hadn't had a chance to play yet, but that is a growing activity that our seniors are very interested in. As this is a nostalgic activity for our senior citizens across the country, the town is moving forward with an outdoor senior amenities package that will include outdoor pickleball courts, outdoor restaurant, restrooms, site furnishing, and landscaping. This will ultimately entail the relocation of our existing tennis courts at Hope Mills Park, which are not in any current condition to facilitate outdoor play. If you look at the presentation at the bottom half of the screen, you can see that these, our existing tennis courts are not in any shape to actually facilitate senior activity. So this entails us relocating that, but this would be something that would anger our senior center. And so, ultimately, that's one of the things we're approaching for this evening. The senior center project focuses on the development of a new senior center, gymnasium, and gymnasium at Goffey Greenway Properties. This project is consistent with the master plan that was adopted in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. The project would consist of a fifteen thousand square foot building with the following amenities. Three massive multipurpose classrooms, a gymnasium with a full-size court, four half-sized internal courts, two offices for senior programming staff, a commercial kitchen, locker rooms and restrooms, a computer lab, and new maintenance shed and storage. Support amenities include a parking area, utilities, and site furnishing. The justification for this project is the fact that we currently do not have a facility in Hope Mills specifically geared toward and targeted our seniors. Right now, they utilize our Parks and Rec facility, but that's them, you know, using the offices in the same place as everyone else. We don't have a dedicated specific facility for seniors. And so that's the justification of us pursuing this project. Next, you see the breakdown in costs. With the construction of a fifteen thousand square foot facility, based on current cost per square foot, it's estimated to be over six billion dollars. Again, the program elements, three multipurpose rooms for classes and reservations, a gymnasium, a full-size court, two offices with senior programming staff, kitchen area, things of that nature. The exact total is six million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars. Next, we have Harriet's Park. What you see before you now is one of my favorite projects. This is the Harriet's Park Master Plan. It's one of my most interesting projects to me, because this is the site of one of our historic mills. Many of you were present third quarter last year when we did a groundbreaking ad here at Harriet's Park. This was the facilitation of the construction of Phase One. That entails a new parking lot, but the two elements that are important is the historic flume will be re-engaged as a stormwater feature. And if you're out there, those huge dam gates will be converted to canopies for pedestrians and things of that nature. Back to what I said before, what are we doing for ourselves? That project is fully funded, it is under construction right now. Martha's gonna throw something at me when I say I want it completed by September, October of this year. And so, that's something we're doing now, but what we're presenting to you is a request for assistance in Phase Two of Harriet's Park. Phase One was funded through Part Ten Grants, appropriated funding from the legislature, brought to our Department of Natural Resources matching funds from the town, and we did reallocate recently some additional offer funds to close it out to start construction. Phase Two, what you see now is coming in at a price like about one million, seven hundred thousand. And this would close out the completion of the entire Harriet's Park Master Plan. Those elements include site preparation, tree removal, a floating boat launch along Lulurockfish Creek, outdoor classroom, pedestrian bridge, possibly a natural trail, pavement, shelter at the event mall that'll be a part of Phase One. Wayfinding signs, park signs. And one thing that's so cool about Harriet's Park is it's gonna be something that we're gonna use as an historic site, but it's something that we're gonna use as a teaching location as well. So when the flume, when it's doing a rain event, you'll see water running through the flume, but that's gonna be us educating on stormwater. And the wayfinding signs and things of that nature will allow us to educate people on the historical significance of why this location was so impactful and important for the Town of Hope Mills. And so, from the Parks and Recreation, which is our first priority, the overall adds with the senior center added to the Harriet's Park Phase Two, the total combined cost is a little over eight million dollars total. So now, let's move on to the infrastructure. This is the part that people may not realize is probably one of the most important. Because when you're driving through town or you're looking at the infrastructure, that's the backbone of the town. In two thousand and twenty, the Town of Hope Mills commissioned a pavement management study by the Kircher Group Incorporated. The study was conducted on town-maintained roads, which totaled approximately sixty-two point six centaline miles. The analysis process allows for the user to determine the minimum level of funding needed over time to meet user-specified performance goals. Based on the results of the study, however, the town's street network condition or pavement condition index was only sixty-eight point three and indicated that only twenty-eight percent of our network of streets are in good condition. Twenty-eight percent of our network of streets are in good condition. The study also assessed the town's street network of thirty-five million dollars with an estimated cost to bring the streets up to standard at eleven point five million dollars. With an influx of additional funding, we feel that our public works department will be equipped to bring a significant portion of our existing deteriorated streets up to standard. Next, we have East Patterson Street. This is impactful because if you notice, this is the bottom left corner of the Harriet's Park Master Plan. So when you're talking about Lulurockfish Creek, that short bend to the right, that is where the embankment located before East Patterson Street, which is just south of Harriet's Park. The embankment for East Patterson Street is the first obstacle Lulurockfish Creek beats downstream of Hope Mills Lake Spillway. It's right across from the dam. In essence, the spillway is the bottom of the funnel of an approximately one point five square mile watershed. With the curvature of the creek in this location, the embankment experiences a significant amount of erosion. As an example, a simple, short-duration, one-inch rain event would typically raise the creek level more than eight feet. During hurricanes, natural influence, water levels rose over top of the East Patterson embankment approximately thirty-five feet above normal creek elevation. These events, as well as normal channel flows, have deteriorated the area areas placed as a protective measure and continue to roll the embankment itself. There's also a new residential development along East Patterson Street that could also be seriously impacted. To date, the town is contracted to have the creek beds cleaned to decrease the damaging effects. And currently, has an engineer working on a solution. Back to what I said before, what we're doing for ourselves. We've spent about two point five billion in state funds, but since that time, the estimates have ballooned to approximately four point five billion. So that's the actual shortfall for East Patterson Street as well. Additional things that our public works department has done so far, we purchased a crack steel trailer, refurbished an asphalt reclaiming trailer, we conducted crack sealing operations throughout the town. This extends the life of our streets where they aren't the most sightly thing, but when you see those tarred patches along cracks, that's called a crack sealing operation. And that is actually done to extend the life of our streets. We've contracted and completed a full depth replacement of three hundred and sixty linear of your roadway to neighborhoods three hundred and sixty feet south of the lot deep compared to the sixty-two miles of those streets that we actually maintain. We've, there's two current projects in there for depth replacement, it's stormwater system installation. And we've conducted the replacement of a fell-in stormwater system in one neighborhood. So with the Wood and Hills project that we have, East Patterson Street and Streets, once everything in terms of available balances are deducted, we're looking at a total of fourteen million, six hundred forty-eight thousand dollars that we would need to be able to bring our streets up to standards as well as handle the embankment at East Patterson Street. And finally, we have our last priority, which is transportation. In two thousand and eighteen, the Town of Hope Mills conducted the Multimotor Congestion Management Plan, which provided a transportation vision consistent with the twenty forty Metrology Plan executed by Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Framework Organization, or FAMPO. With this plan, regulations were provided to, a time to collaborate with FAMPO and FAS to create a transit system for Hope Mills that serves transit-supported areas with a mix of residential, retail, and employment destination using fast routes. What you're also seeing is, everything we're requesting, we're getting this data from studies that we conduct. And so, this map that you see here, part of the Multimotor Congestion Management Plan, the red areas, the tan areas, and the orange areas represent the area where you have the highest need for residents that would utilize our transportation system. Hope Mills currently has no scheduled transit service, although many residents are dependent upon on-demand services such as taxis and the Cumberland County Community Transportation Program or CTP Paratransit Service. Nearly half of CTP's ridership, a total of one in four hundred regular riders, which are predominantly elderly or disabled, originates right here in Hope Mills. Most trips are destined towards medical offices and services, like catered at a medical center, while others are for work and shopping. while others are for work and shopping. In two thousand and seventeen, the FAS system identified potential routes and operating costs within Hope Mills. Hope Mills is working with FAS on a crosstown connector that would loop around Hope Mills and connect back to the FAS of Hope Mills. Stops were proposed at several retail and employment centers on SC sixty-nine, Rockfish Road, and Camden of the three towns per hour during peak period. With this study, several types of demographic data are used to collectively identify transit propensity, including areas such as areas with a high population density, areas where you have more than ten percent of households who don't own a vehicle, areas near employers, areas near schools, and areas near community resources such as library, community centers. In terms of our internal system and cost, again, as the town explores the coordination efforts with FAMPO and City of Fayetteville for the crosstown connector, the cost continues to be the hurdle. With the data that was collected through the multi-motor congestion management plan, we ensure that the proposed route would focus on residents of Hope Mills that would give the highest of the census rights. This will be accomplished through data indicating the areas with the highest number of residents that do not own vehicles. Based on preliminary numbers, the cost to facilitate the FAS connector, the startup would be a hundred and twenty thousand and the annual operation cost would be thirty-five thousand. The town of Hope Mills would also like to explore the facilitation of an internal system focused on ridership within town limits. This system would tie into the bus stops for the FAS connector, but would be tied specifically to stops around Hope Mills. As this system would not be as extensive as it would wish to, we feel that the purchase of too many buses would accomplish this goal. This system would entail two twenty-five passenger buses to create an interior system off of the crosstown connector which would establish a full transit system for the town of Hope Mills. The cost associated would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or a hundred and ten thousand each. So what you have to break down here is, the startup is a hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty thousand would be the cost to operate it annually for ten years, and with the purchase of the two main buses at two hundred and twenty thousand, you have roughly right below seven hundred thousand dollars in total cost. If you're looking at urban areas, most of the times when you have your transit system, you have an internal bus system that operates as an auxiliary off of that. So our crosstown connector would be our big system, and this many van operation will be our territory. Another thing I'd like to highlight, not necessarily tie to the ask for the Stephen, but I wanted to highlight future projects that we do have on the rocks. You recall when I presented the master plan for the golf course, there were additional elements. The sports complex here, I call that an economic generator because if you're looking at a five-field, wacky wheel design, that typically would generate potentially five to seven million dollars annually and will be baseball. You also have the skate park. We have communicated with the local hometown, which is a celebrity to us, Mr. Big Glenn. He's a sophomore graduate. He did our actual mural on our basketball court here at Hope Mills Complex. He expressed an interest in partnering with us for a skate park, so this will be the reconstruction of the skate park here at this location. But he expressed an interest in more visibility at the golf course because he could possibly potentially attract years being with X Games. And so a lot of these initiatives that we're doing are geared towards spearheading additional sources of revenue. The amphitheater, that's another aspect of the golf course master plan. It will include a large event lawn, grading, repurposing shelters, paved natural walking trails. That could potentially yield concerts and things of the nature in the town. So and then you have the passive park elements. Marco and I have talked about a possible bog guard in the wetland areas. One thing that I like about it is the expansion of the visiting pond in that area for fishing and golf course. We talked about possibly achieving operation along the creek that is located toward the bottom half of our golf course as well. So to our total overall budgetary request this evening, looking at the Hope Mills Senior Center, you're looking at Heritage Park Phase Two, you're looking at our infrastructure requests and transportation, there's a total request for twenty-three million, five hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. There is a breakdown that does give you a total cost of each individual add, but this represents the total cost of the three guards that we set. Now, I'd like to open the floor up to discussions between our representative and our board of commissioners and our mayor and myself and our finance director, our parks director, and our public works director are here to answer any details or questions that you may have.
That's a great presentation. I wanted to know, on transportation fees, is that six ninety-two a year?
No. Oh, that's six ninety-two, so.
Oh, five hundred, yeah.
The annual cost is thirty-five thousand a year. So the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount is the cost of our operation for ten years. The six ninety-two would be the ten-year cost of the fifty plus the cost of the two vans and the startup cost of the FAS. So that's six ninety-two would yield that entire system for a total of ten years. So that's not the annual.
That seems kind of low. We need to work on the transportation, the years that are worth there. That doesn't include the purchase of the vehicles of this amount?
The two vans that we're talking about, we priced them at a hundred and ten thousand each. Those are two twenty-five passenger vans, so we're not talking about the actual purchase of the bus. The bus that we did would simply be FAS actually bringing the bus to us. And so the cost that we've actually worked with FAMPO and City of Fayetteville would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for startup costs if we still took the bus coming here. And it would be thirty-five thousand annually to operate the bus coming here. The actual two hundred and twenty would simply be the cost of our own vans to get people around town. So once you purchase that, you're really just paying for staff for drivers and guys.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you so much for the presentation. I have a few quick questions. Earlier, you have identified as a pay study, which I assume that you all believe in on H three pay studies coordinating with P M I, Public Safety Council. A couple of things, I wanted to get an idea of where you feel you are with the market in terms of your pay, which you anticipate salary increases and those are the recurring costs. So do you have any idea, follow-up of what that recurring cost would be?
I'll give you just a initial answer, not a fit it over to our finance director, but one of the reasons why we actually entertain the pay study is because, just from a police standpoint, we're losing a lot of officers as our salaries are not competitive. Looking at the City of Fayetteville, their salaries are much higher than ours. I think the counties just did a fifteen to sixteen percent increase in their salaries. Pay studies actually, and not just talking about the county in City of Fayetteville, they accomplishes ten of the surrounding actual municipalities in a forty-five minute drive up here. And the idea is that if I live in Hope Mills and I can drive to Red Springs, it's realistic that I would be able to leave here and still live in my current residence to get to actually make a more competitive wage. I think City of Fayetteville offered sign bonuses, got a significant increase in salary. So when we looked at the numbers, we were well below the region in our competitive wages. We're not just looking at police, we're looking at fire as well. And so I'll let Drew answer the specific numbers, but the main thing we found out was that our wages were not competitive to the overall surrounding market.
We have gotten several options that we reviewed for the pay study, and we're looking at, there are four original options. The third option, one we were most interested in, that had to do with figuring the pay study calculating on prior years of service. So you had the compression of each salary so that their new pay would be based on how many years of service that they've actually been working in their current position. So right now, we've got it where it's give or take, anywhere between six hundred and seventy-five and seven hundred thousand dollars is what the annual addition cost is gonna be. And that's for all first responders, and then we went ahead and had them analyze Townwide as well because you can increase first responders' pay, the rest of the staff can say, hey, what about ours? So we went ahead and did the pay study, council offered to do Townwide, but we're gonna start with first responders and then work the rest of the staff there.
Follow-up question. So that'd be seven hundred thousand, potentially seven hundred thousand dollars recurring costs.
And that includes benefits as well.
Okay. I know the first time we met, we talked about your considering a tax increase, right? So I'm gonna put that out there. I don't remember the dollar amount that each cent would generate for you, but if you put that in context with the property tax with the county, how much money did you lose from the, will you lose from the readjustment, from the accounting? And how much would a tax increase, you know, generate to make you whole again? I just wanted to get an idea of what you lost and how we came that basic money back.
Okay. You're talking about sales tax allocation, how the standards change it.
Yes, sir.
That is gonna be, we're gonna lose roughly about one point eight million dollars in how they're really re-allocated the sales tax. So we are planning for that potential in the future, and what we've done through budgeting, we're going to intentionally budget, put some money into some balance, current budget year and next budget year, just in case we need to use reserves covering anything that year. As far as income or property taxes for now, one cent generates a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So that's what we've got on here. We are looking at the viability of a potential tax increase. We brought that up to council, they told us their views on that, so it is up for discussion with this year's budget. And if that does happen, then the, maybe the first responders' pay and some of the towns portion of some of these projects and operations will go, will be used for some of that.
Last question. When was the last time you increased property taxes in Hope Mills?
It was in the eleventh, so it was before I was here, and that was for police officer salaries, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
So I'd like to go back to the mini-bus. So you're saying you're gonna be able to operate that bill for thirty-five thousand dollars a year for ten years? Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
The mini-bus is not the operative, thirty-five thousand is what City of Fayetteville has told us would be the operating cost for them to send a crosstown bus to town Hope Mills. Once you purchase the mini-bus buses, those will belong to the town. And so that's one thing I wanted to make sure, thirty-five thousand is what City of Fayetteville tells us is what costs annually for them to bring that service.
That's what they're gonna charge you?
Yes.
And they're gonna do that for ten years with no raises for inflation or cost?
Hopefully.
I might run into a couple of contracts with them if I have to. So how much would it cost to operate two mini-vans?
Typical cost would be minimal because if we would own those vans, so you're talking about the cost of maybe staff salaries of the bus driver and ultimately gas.
Where is that reflected in the?
The operating cost is not in there.
So the challenge we have here reading the file about this issue, I'm assuming y'all know, we're going into the short session, and we don't allocate money, appropriate money in the short session. We operate on a buy-in budget here in North Carolina. Last year was a long session. We appropriate money, well, first of all, we create the budget, and then we appropriate the money according to the budget. And then we come back on April the twentieth. And we enter back into the short session where we massage and adjust any abnormalities that we find with the budget that was crafted and created last year. So we don't have the ability to go back to the well in the year two thousand and twenty-four. So it would be the long-year budget. Next year of two thousand and twenty-five would be the first time we can come back to the budget for new appropriation or new funding. So while we're talking about transportation, how much you get out of the power bill every year?
I would defer that to our public works director or accident manager.
We roughly get about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So you're saying that your streets are eleven million?
Eleven million, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
What page are you on there?
You don't have a page number on there.
We don't have a page number.
Because we're right eleven million.
Yeah, I hear this street's eleven million. So you got a fourteen million dollar ask on that. Is that reflective of the power bill money?
The fourteen million doesn't include power bill, but that is tied to the East Patterson Street shortfall plus the eleven million. So it's about two point five. We had some money that we got from the state to start the embankment restoration, but those estimates have ballooned to about four point five, so it's about two point five for it right.
Right, now, your total ask was the twenty, twenty-seven million. Are you proposing any kind of a local match to go along with any of that? Or is that the net amount that you're asking for?
That would be the net amount that we'd ask for.
The reason being, folks in Raleigh kind of like local skin in the game. And so they like to have.
So I understand, without understanding that funding would be allocated in the long session, but as far as our match goes and having done grants for pass, it usually helps when you have shovel rated projects. And so our intent was to go forward with the design process of the senior town and some of these other projects and have construction documents ready. So when we end the long session, we have shovel rated projects that will allow us to, if funding is made available, then we're ready to move to construction. So as far as skinning the game, that was our intent to actually go through the design process with senior center and also perhaps Phase Two of Heritage Park. So if you have construction documents or even further into the schematic process with more accurate cost assessment, we feel that might situate a little bit better for funding. So that was our intent, you know, for at least a year to get the design work finished and then present that to you and then ask, well, are these shovel rated projects? We say, yes, they are. That's the long, the whole time. So that was my thinking anyways, in going over these projects with staff and the board.
So you got the long session starts next January, and the budget is crafted after May and starts getting discussed and committee meetings are held and. So you've got the long session starts next January and the budget is crafted after May and starts getting discussed and committee meetings are held and things are vetted. And then we usually get the budget out, theory, it's supposed to be out by the first day of July, in theory. Not going to happen until probably September for our, so you're not going to get the money, if you're in the appropriation approval, you're not going to get the money for ninety days minimum after that. So, because the budget's got to be certified and then you got to go through your process of meeting all the criteria with paperwork. So you got all of twenty-five and the first quarter of twenty-six before you get any money. So, but I always like to make everybody aware of this because we've got one disadvantage in Raleigh that every state has the same disadvantage and the federal government has an advantage. They have a money press, we'll have one. Every dollar we send out came out of somebody's pocket, came from some type of, so we don't have the luxury of a money press. On your senior center, looking at your contingency of ten percent and your seven percent design and architectural engineering fee, have y'all ever considered using a design build concept versus an architectural bid concept?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, and in this case. We've actually used that delivery method in the past. That would be an option, but if we were to use design build, it would yield us a quicker project, I don't know if it'd save us any money, but not having the money allocated, it would be more like a design bridge build. Because we're probably doing design build, but if you're in a situation where we get a design team in to design it and make a contract to check the cost assessment, but until the money's actually allocated, we wouldn't be able to execute the build portion. We could definitely, we could definitely look at a design build delivery method or design bridge build.
I'd certainly recommend it to you.
Absolutely.
Because you can build it, as you just stated, quicker, you decide quicker. So it doesn't make any difference if you don't have the money, but if you know the money's coming, you know, that you can set in place the design build concept and play executed. And we're going to have some kind of a little slowdown, it's going to be a soft landing in North Carolina. Probably North Carolina is where you hit it on the head, we're going to find out. You don't know all we're sleeping.
I know that.
I was just noticing that your population in nineteen ninety was eighty-one hundred and sixty-four and two thousand twenty-one, seventy-five and seventy-eight-six. And I guarantee you, it's more than that in that area. And so they're coming and they're coming with adventures. And then you've got other things that are going to come to Cumberland County because of I-95. And that being the projects that are going to be sustaining the vendors, the contractors and the suppliers for the battery plant and the automobile plant on four twenty-one car. Those folks are going to suck up twenty thousand jobs in that fifty mile rate. So their suppliers or vendors and their contractors are going to come another fifty miles out. Well, where is a hundred miles from Moncture and a hundred miles from Liberty? We're sitting in it right now.
You're right here.
So we got to be prepared for that. One of the things that I was absolutely shocked about when I picked up Cumberland County in my district was that there's no county water and no county sewer system. Only water and sewer is owned by the municipalities and PFC City. And I found that to be very strange, forty years ago, the federal government would put your water lines and your sewer lines in for free. But that's, that ship is safe after that, no more. So to get caught up, I'd say my first blush estimate is a billion dollars. To get caught up in the county with where they need to be. Then we've got P-PAS that is a conversation that's going to have to be had. Because Charlotte Observer or the News Observer, I just noticed today, had a report checking the water in many of the municipal water systems and they all have P-PAS. PWC's got P-PAS in theirs, because I just had it personally checked about six weeks ago. I had the raw water checked and the finished water coming out of there. So we're going to spend twelve million dollars to run water lines out to Graves Creek area where we're going to be putting polluted waters in the polluted water that's already out there. I can't make the math work on that just yet, trying to absorb that. But we've got a bigger problem that we're going to have to talk about. And y'all have a water plant, don't you?
PWC, that's the one.
That's the reason I asked that question.
Yeah.
I knew the answer to that. You're depending, the same thing, on water and sewer from PWC. Now to get their waters clean, they've estimated it's going to cost ninety million dollars to put in the scrubbers to clean that, charcoal scrubbers to clean that water to get it to a number of P-PAS. I understand that the federal government has yet to establish what the P-PAS number is to say it's harmful to the human body. So, you know, we're all sitting here waiting with bait and braise from a number from Washington that we haven't received yet. And there's a lot of moving parts to that situation as well. But we've got to be looking a great deal further down the road than we've ever looked before in Cumberland County. It's not critical against anybody. We're going to play the cards that we're dealt. We've been dealt a hand that's less than stellar because the infrastructure wasn't put in forty years ago in the century. I wasn't here, nobody at the table was here, we didn't have a dog in there fighting at the time, many of us weren't even conceived under the rule yet. So, you know, we're at a distinct disadvantage with that. But I do appreciate your presentation. And I would tell you to drive a hard bargain on the architect's fees and on contingencies and stuff like that and consider the design build. But do it as a young man just stated, and if you're not going to have the money till the first of twenty-six, be prepared to go on the first of twenty-six, you know, from that standpoint. I understand, none of us here in general sent me out checked. We can't promise you anything, I was going to fire here. And, you know, that's the only thing we can do with that and then we've got to get a budget passed, we've got to have support for that budget. And if you don't support the budget, it's hard to get things done, you know, the budget's not supported, especially on a local level. But I appreciate the dinner, the pork chop was exceptional, the dessert, which if I had to eat it every day, I'd weigh nine hundred pounds. And I'm glad I'm not around it because it was all sort of exceptional, the folks did a fantastic job and put it on. So I thank you for having me here tonight and I'll be glad if you got a question, I'll be glad to try to answer.
All right, have any other questions?
I had one, I see my representative had questions before.
Any other questions?
I had a few. Thank you, and I want to divert to follow up with some of the questions that Senator Applewhite asked, and that was your tax increase. And curious, have you discussed how much you're going to be asking for? I'm curious anymore than else because I find the economy, and I'll just go ahead and say it right now, it's not real conducive to asking an increased tax. I know as a homeowner here, I will not be, not in here, but in the county, real thrilled about having my value of my home go up already and the taxes that I'm going to increase paying and then have another tax on top of that. So I'm just curious if you actually made a decision and how much money, is that going to help hold you through all the things that I hear of your twenty twenty now? You're the mayor.
I got it either way. As far as the decision goes, Representative People, no, we have not made a final decision, we're only in the discussion consideration phase. And we've got our budget retrieve workshop coming up on March seventh. Where in this room is where those difficult questions, difficult discussions are going to take place based on the recommendations that you see here, plus the pay study that's ongoing and meeting the current and the future needs of Hope Middle. Because we're only going to grow more. I mean, it's not a question of if, it's going to happen. We're growing more and how we can meet the needs of citizens. We haven't raised taxes, that's true, I think twelve years. I don't think we missed five years raise taxes at all in twelve years. Now, some folks can look at that in a negative way, some folks can look at that positively. Is that we have met the needs of the citizens and we have held firm on the forty-six cent tax. Some folks could say, well, you know, you've got all these issues and you've got all these plans and projects and initiatives, then maybe you could have planned a little bit better prior getting there by raising taxes a few years in those twelve. So you can look at it on a double edged sword either way you want. But, no, no, we haven't made any final decisions. We haven't made any final decisions. This is all discussions and like Senator said, we're playing the cards we're dealt too. And we've got some skin and we've got some skin in our project. From, you know, long session, from the last session. And we were able to reappropriate some funding to complete a thirteen year project, which is phase one of Heritage Park on that banner section right there. Thirteen year project, finally we're going to complete phase one of that, phase two is what's on, is what's in here. And then we look at that other one, that master plan for the former golf course. Prior to twenty eighteen, that golf course was closed to the public. Completely closed for years. That golf course was closed. And in eighteen, the former golf course was open and a temporary park was put there. You wouldn't believe the amount of senior citizens, veterans like myself, like you turned out. They use that golf course every day. I know because I own with, they have service dogs, they have families, it has become such a huge opportunity. If you want to talk about it, it's a secret in Hope Middle right now, there it is. But it'll sit here no more because it's open and it's out. And what you see here in this target is what we're trying to do for the amenities, for the many people that choose Hope Middle. We have such a great opportunity. I'll tell you, funding for the Bill Chris Senior Citizen Center, I've been in that center, it is phenomenal. There's another center that's being built now in City Chapel, phenomenal of what it gives back to our community and how it helps our community. So the skin in the game on one of them was the Heritage Park, the other one was we finished the inclusive playground. That was a ten year project by just reappropriating some funds from our internal, this board has done. We've done that, actually, since we were elected in December. We have another opportunity to do something with movement a little bit more, the pickleball and tennis courts, they're actually down on the golf course. And instead of spending money on repurposing something that we're going to move anyway, then we might as well just go ahead and just move the whole thing. And now we've got this new sport called pickleball, which I haven't had one of those hard patches yet, I will maybe. Yeah, I like tennis, so, but, you know, we're looking at the growth and what we can give back to our community. Now, services are not free. I can say that and they aren't, I think everyone in this room would agree that services are not free. But it's that balance. That is where the dicey part comes, the tricky part comes, and that's where the discussion comes into play, is where that balance is. And that is our challenge. And we're just glad that each of you are here tonight to listen to our challenge and listen to the parties, even though we're in the short term. This is what we're looking at something doing now. That's why we put future projects on here, is because we're looking at short term, we're looking at long term. Because just like you said, Senator, again, they're coming. They are going to come. I-95 will be built here soon, be finished up and that'll be another piece of. But let me, let me be quiet here and banter down.
Oh, quick question, what's your unbalance? Got an eight million dollars, what's that percentage to the budget? Let me see right away.
You asked a question this morning, he's answering from the senior.
Total budget?
The percentage that the LGC requires is about, what, maybe it's eight percent?
Yeah.
How was your?
We're well over that, we've got like twenty-seven percent, we're well over eight.
Ma'am, you were asking for about taxes and the tax increase. I know last year when it came to budget time, it was such a struggle for this board and I know Mayor Pro-Tam, she voted for it and I kicked myself because we were so, we had so much pressure from the citizens to not increase taxes. We knew we were going to have a shortfall with the goal from adware law to per capita taxes and then also having to pay back the money for the public safety building and all this other stuff, infrastructure. We didn't raise taxes and I kick myself every day because we're still behind, you know, we're still struggling. It's still a downfall for us and we're going to have to play catch up now. Now granted, once we actually vote for capta and then would be the tax value of the houses and everything, that's going to affect it. But we can't just skate along for this next year, we have to do something proactive. And that was our problem is we had the opportunity to be proactive and we still kicked it down the road. And so now again, even with the stress we've been getting from the citizens, we have to do something. One of my priorities, you know, because this whole package obviously was compiled with our input. I'm, because of these shortfalls that we're dealing with, I, as much as I like recreation and stuff, infrastructure is my big concern. They get to senior center, the roads look tore up, you know, and the fact that, didn't they even get like five million for a museum?
No, they didn't start, they want more like sixty-eight million.
And it's like, we only need eleven million for roads and that, you know, a museum? Exactly, like, infrastructure, we need roads and this is where, this is where, you know, the struggle is, it's like, we're the second largest municipality and we're getting shortchanged because a museum takes precedence over it? I don't get it, but, you know, that's neither here nor there, but it's.
That wasn't my approval, I won't, that's not. But we can talk about that, yeah, one on one if you want.
Sure. That's the struggle that we have is, you know, we get input from the citizens, we get beat up by them, I hope, you know, we try to do best by them, but we have to look at infrastructure as well. So it's like we're getting both sides and the struggle is real, the struggle is real. That's all I have.
Go back to the change in the sales tax that had to go on. And bring me up to speed about that, when it took place, when it's going to be implemented? Is it one and done, give me the history on that? Because to be honest with you, I just picked up Cumberland County not long ago, so I'm still learning stuff here with that. I didn't know about this, so I'm interested to hear the story.
Okay, it was last year, I believe, the county, well, mid-year before that, the county had told us, actually the last several years, that in some The county had told us, actually the last several years, that at some point they're going to be switching to Adaloram way of how they choose sales tax.
But they gave you some warning.
Right.
But they didn't give you a formal warning, they gave you.
They initially did. But each year, or each, was it four years, I think, they would renew it.
Five.
The last four or five years, okay, five years.
Renewed.
The last time it was renewed.
Okay, you say renewed, what do you mean by?
A five year feed it the way it is without some network.
And nothing's changed, nothing's changed to that yet. Not yet, okay.
But at the last time for the renewal, the county did not want to renew it. They said, it's over, it's done. So the municipality got together and asked, can we at least renew it up to the point that, to the revow year for property tax? So the county agreed, and said, we won't change to Adaloram until the year of the revow, which is year after next.
A year after next, twenty-six?
It's the twenty-five, twenty-six.
All right, that's, that's the year after next.
Right.
So we're going like.
Then we got the twenty-four, twenty-five, yes, the twenty-five, twenty-six. So that's when they're switching to Adaloram, they said they would wait until then, so they did like a two year extension, to keep it the way it is until that point. So that towns could choose, with revow, if they go revenue neutral, they can increase their taxes, whatever they have to do to come up with that difference that's up to each municipality. But they said, you know, I guess a more convenient way to do it during a revaluation. So we have the current year, we have next year, and then the potential loss is estimated right now, different sales tax, about one point eight million dollars.
That happens from one year to the next, there's no buffer period, there are no soft close. I, I would suggest to you, that you get with your other municipalities folks, and negotiate a soft close. Uh, we just went through this with another county that I used to represent, and they flipped it overnight. Uh, didn't give anybody, uh, any warning, just did it the next year through a meeting of the county. Uh, I knew to say it was a, a, a track, it was, uh, put a couple of the, the municipalities on the watch list with the LGC. Uh, so that I would, uh, and I'm not being critical of the county, I'm not, I'm, I'm neutral, I'm not for or against anybody. I'm, I'm, I'm representing everybody. Uh, but I would, uh, since you're talking about one point eight million dollars, is that the number I heard? And, and that's the difference in zero one year, one point eight the next.
Yeah.
Is that one point eight gross, or is that one point eight net?
Net.
Okay, so that's the full effect, after you recoup from, from the, from the difference.
Yeah, that's what they gave us last year.
Okay, they?
The county.
Okay, so I would tell you that you need to sit down with them and negotiate a soft close for two, four years. Where you layer into it, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, versus going all at one time. That's too harsh, uh, is my humble opinion.
We agree. That, that's probably what they should have worked out at that meeting.
I will tell you, Senator, that's, that's even a phase in, the same thing that you're talking about, a soft.
Soft close, yeah.
The phase in, should, that's what should have been on the paper.
But it's not, it's not too late.
But what it wasn't presented, and I wasn't, I wasn't a member of the board at that time. But the way that I understand this, that it was all decided between the, the county commissioner and the mayor's coalition at that time. Well, did anybody sign something, is there a binding agreement?
Yeah, there is, we signed a three year extension.
Yeah, this is not, that's not what I'm talking about. No, no, we're talking about a phase in of the one point eight.
Yeah.
And you're looking exactly at fifty, seventy-five, twenty-five. And that would have been for all nine municipalities. It surely would have helped every one of us in County County to do it just that way. Well, I'd tell you, go back to the well. And we should have done it that way. I'd tell you, go back to the well. Ain't a horse that can't be ridden, or a rider that can't be ridden. Well, I appreciate those comments, I truly do, because it's, it's a sort of, it's a good thing. Well, I mean, in, in fairness, you, to take that bigger hit, is, is a big hit at one time. You know, it, it, it's to, to soft close it, layer it in, you know, everybody kind of gets, you know, you, you can absorb some. You can't absorb, I mean, one point eight, uh, you just told me a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, one point eight, that's fifteen cents.
Yeah.
I'm not a math major.
No, you're, you're on.
But from what I understand, they had been going, they had been going on for probably fifteen years. And it kept being extended and extended, and they said the last time, I tried to talk to someone personally, is the, you knew this was coming. Beginning of this back and forth has been going on beyond five years, been going on for years. And if there was no deals, no more extensions, they've been extending it for twenty years now, is what we've told them.
And I will add, one of the main reasons why they refused to go beyond three years, is because over those twenty years, there was no increase in that. Had we actually increased our taxes, couple pennies or couple cents over that period.
They got a point, they got a point, I didn't take that into consideration, but they got a point.
But that's why this tax increase, uh, that's why this tax increase conversation is so layered, with what we're, uh, looking at. They did give us a three year extension to the revow year, uh, but we can't continue to say, well, we're not going to raise, we're not going to raise it. When we're looking at, uh, uh, a bus off country, a couple more.
Senator, in eighteen, was the last time that the sales tax contract was really discussed. And at that point, the county made it clear, in eighteen, that there would be no renewal. It was, you got, you got five years to deal with this, we're not going to renew it, we're not going to kick the can down the road. But nonetheless, here come twenty-three. So the county wanted to say, okay, well, we gave you five years, but the deal's back on the table as well. We're not ready, we didn't plan, we didn't do this, we didn't do that. And so that's where the hard line in the sand is. Now, here in Hope Mills, what we haven't done here, is that we haven't had a dedicated pay study for our employees in years. And I mean a dedicated, and that, and I mean, I'm just going to put the cards on the table, but that's where they are. We really haven't. So, we have police officers, firefighters, and town employees who start here, and then they grab some experience a year or two or so, then Marko, where do you think they go? They go to county, or they go to the city, or they go to another municipality? So that's what, that's what's happened, because, and this is the one thing, we can don't raise property taxes in twelve years. So you look at it through the good, or the bad, or the ugly. Because it costs, it costs you to pay people. Services are not free, employee working are not free. So when we look at a pay study, which the, the last board commissioned in October, uh, and now we're working through that. It's going to be a sizable amount, because it wasn't done in prior year, like it should have been. With compression and equity adjustment. So now you're going to try to catch it all up at once. And so we were looking at different models of how we're going to do that, and then, you know, and we're looking at six fifty, seven hundred thousand dollars reoccurring every year. So this ain't a one and done, this is a one and going forward. This little ball's going to be played, come out on field at every game. I mean, you're just not going to play full quarters and decide who wins it. So that is, so you got that on the table, and then you got this one point eight unknown. But you don't know what property rebounds will look like, I've heard all kind of rumors, I've heard speculation. I don't have a, a Harry Potter wizard's glass in front of me to tell me what's going to come. I don't know if it's going to be exceptionally low. We just went through one in Moore County, and it's done. Yeah, and it could be, it could be. And that is something that, that, that may happen. What is the city's tax rate?
You don't have to count.
The city tax.
Oh, so.
Oh, Bill? Yeah. Or forty-six? Yeah. Where's forty-six?
We're the lowest in the county.
Yeah, we are the lowest.
The city's going on strangely.
It's that the bottom, probably more.
But you see, that's the good thing though, because we have managed our resources effectively well over these twelve years. That's the good thing. But somewhere along the line, it adds up, and you got to make some part decisions. It's either that, or you got to cut something. And I don't have, I'm not telling, I'm not saying anything anybody doesn't know. I mean, you either got to cut something, eliminate something, remove something, to get that budget balance. You know what LGC has come up?
Okay, we don't need those. I got that big picture.
You know what, you know what LGC has come up?
Now, we got that part big picture.
Mayor, I appreciate that you mentioned the, the parts of working, like the senior, Bill Chris Senior Center, um, but they have increased your property tax over the years.
They did last year.
Yeah, so that's how you pay for all of these.
Yep, they did, they did last year.
Have you considered, um, you know, it's been a few years, but they put a, a parcel that's gone on, you know, a referendum, they're putting on the ballot, to allow the citizens to ask for it. So I, you know, particularly with Parks and Rec, he's, you know, he'd be like the citizens say, whether or not they really want it, and put it on the referendum, and see how bad they want it.
Senator, that comes right by to that board right there about the former golf course. Back in eighteen, we realized that to get, so to get funding for the things that we were looking to do here in Hope Mills, that we were going to have to eventually talk about a GO. Bond.
Yes, sir.
To do that, one of the very first things that we were faced with, is that we didn't have a master plan dedicated for any of the parks in Hope Mills. Because we were applying for a part of it, which we didn't see. But we didn't have any master plan at all. And that's where that first start phase is, that's probably where Marko came in. Is that we had to do that first, about all of our parks, the master plan. And those, those are costly, they're about forty-nine thousand pieces, when you're looking at them. But that's the initial framework of, of where do you, where are you now, where do you want to go, which is what you're seeing now. And what is it going to take to get there? Well, we pretty much know what it's going to take us to get there. So property taxes, one, a GO bond is another, referendum for the citizens. Because, you know, if folks, if folks see exactly why you want to have a bond, what's the benefit of it, is it going to benefit the R O lives of them? They're, they're pretty much supportive, as long as they know who's it going to benefit. And that's probably the biggest piece. We realized that back in eighteen, nineteen. Uh, then, as we were going through the master plan basis, some things happened, and COVID came in, it kind of shut us down a little bit. So now that conversation's coming back to the table, as an opportunity to go forward with our Parks and Rec, uh, initiatives and, and programs. We was a public paper, just about everything we want to put there, and over Heritage Park as well.
Is that something you could do before we had, we went back in for a long session, to see, you know, if you don't have time?
Don't have time for that one. But Senator, what we are using is that, also, we have a grant opportunity now that we did not have before.
The National League, um, Municipalities Grant Program, so that's why I spoke to the multi-chronic approach. We're engaging the grant program, we're talking about a GO bond, we're talking about a tax relief, we're engaging you guys, we're looking at this from, I think we're one of them, um, but if you talk to Hank with Dan Fung, who will tell you that we're engaging him. At an extremely high level, just with fan group grants, we have about two grants, total of about eight hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk, uh, program, two sidewalk projects at a time. So we're looking at this from a lot of different, uh, angles, to try to raise this down to Hope Mills.
We realize that, Senator, you're exactly right, in the shorts, in, in the, uh, short session, we realize that there will be no funding for any of this for twenty-six. But we would also like to ask you for any advice or guidance and direction that you would be able to provide us. To engage and complete some of the requests that we, that you reviewed tonight in our slideshow. If you could do that, that's, that's half the battle for us.
I think with coming down that, you know, mentioning some of the factors that at least I would weigh. Um, I, I am, I'm a proponent of letting the people decide what they want. Um, you can't even have voters come out and say, I'm, I'm going to pay for these, I don't know why we should be paying to do it. I mean, that's just, I don't know, what, what I think. Um, I know that a year ago, when we met, um, that there had not yet been a discussion with the Transportation Director in, in Fayetteville. Because there was some discussion of an agreement with the city of Fayetteville. I, I would be helpful with that, if you have not yet had that conversation, to massage this whole transportation piece, um, and make, be a different opportunity now.
They had asked, um, so we were, we were really, um, working with the previous, uh, right there. And then they asked when the new director came on, that she was new, and to give her some time. So that was last year time.
Okay.
So.
Can I help you with that?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments, any other board members?
First of all, I'd like to thank each and one of you that came out here this evening, including our town staff. Um, and you from Fayetteville. Uh, I certainly hope there's something we can work out together. My name is Jerry Legg. Uh, I've been on this board a long time, and I want to raise taxes one time. But I think, from what I can see, that might be changing in the near future. Um, we've got to do our part in trying to see that some of the things we need funded, get funded. And we urge each and every one of you to, to do what you can to assist us. Uh, we've got, like I said, a great town staff here, starting up here and going on back to, to some of the other tables back to here. Some department heads that are, are here tonight.
Thirty-one.
We've got a, the new mayor, that's working hard, to try to get some of this stuff completed. And our request in line, to meet what the shortfalls might be. And in the past, like I said, it wasn't too hard to get a little bit of help, but today is hard. Everybody wants their piece of the pie. And we, we want our piece of the pie as well. But we don't, we, we're not against giving someone part of our pie. We just want, wants coming to us. Um, and we are coming to County Tax Credit as well. And, uh, and you take, what our Hope Mills people pay into the county, all you do is give it back to us. So please consider everything you can to help us out. Uh, I know that a lot of you guys are a long time. These two over here, Ms. Applewhite, I'm not that familiar with, with the Senator. But I'm familiar with some of these others in the building with us tonight. And I think now that we have a good board, that we're, that's working together, including the mayor. To try to make things easier in the future for our citizens. And that's what we get up for every day, is try to wonder what the next question is going to be from a citizen. I get them every day, first of duty for my wife. What are you going to do? Well, I don't know what I'm going, what I'm going to do, but, but I'm going to be here trying my, my durdest to, to make things right for our citizens in our town. And I moved to this town in nineteen eighty-two, and fell in love with it, and I'm still here. But, you know, how it is, sometimes we have to bend over backwards to make ends meet, and that's what this board's trying to do. Uh, our mayor, Phil Kim, our mayor, and our, our fellow commissioners, uh, I don't think we have a hard time getting our hands dirty and our heads together, to try to make this work. So again, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out, it's a pleasure having you out with us. Uh, you guys are setting up about the second meeting in this building that we had, I believe the second meeting.
That we've had.
That we've had.
What is the fire set, sir?
Yeah. The town staff, second meeting that we've had in this new building. And it's a wonderful structure, we're proud of it, and we. it's a wonderful structure. We're proud of it. And we, we certainly think that there'll be more, just like around the county. So thank you very much.
Anybody else? No? We're good?
No, thank you all for coming out.
All right. Any other comments?
Give you ample consideration and, uh, that's the appropriate time.
Well, you know what? That's, that's all we can answer.
You know, if something changes, we'd like to know about it. Find the more data.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would try to go back and see if you could entertain the folks with a soft close.
I'd like to.
I hear what you say. I hear what you say. And, and, and there is, there is validity to not raising taxes. You knew it was coming. And it's your fault. We're gonna blame y'all. And you know how that, it's easy to blame somebody. Yeah, but sometimes it's difficult to say, you know, we need to, we need to cut this baby in the middle and work this thing together and, uh, and work together. There are fine common ground.
Yeah.
And, uh, the, the municipalities, uh, you know, I, I don't know the condition of all of them. I'm just now getting around them. I don't represent them yet. I only represent Spring Lake, uh, in the current, in the, in the current map.
Right.
Uh, and a portion of, of Fayetteville. But, uh, with the new map, I represent every municipality except Fayetteville. I'll leave that one aside.
Thank you, Sarah.
So, uh, I'm sure I'll be hearing about this from some other municipalities. Uh, and I'm gonna be raised a question about what their condition is, how this is gonna affect them. Uh, because, you know, we've got a lot of this time.
I hope you do. Senator, have you anything?
No, it's always glad to be, to be out here with you. Second time back in this facility and it's amazing. Good, good job. Thank you. And I'll get back. We'll reach out to the city about that.
Representative Jack?
Thank you for having me, but I'm home now.
Yes, you are.
It was great, though. Great presentation. And I'm very interested in the transportation piece. Who served on the, on FAM poll and THC, TCC?
Yeah, I saw it.
Why did you want to?
You mentioned it.
We're talking about the representative from the town. TCC? Or THC?
This is the first time, uh, because previous, it was, uh, previous male woman.
That's good. I mean, you, that's important to be on those committees to get the funding from the feds and from the town. So, yeah, I'm glad to be there.
I think, um, we have four projects, um, that'll get you right now. So, um, I'm the TCC representative, but I actually pull in additional Parks and Rec and local staff too. So, um, we're direct, I guess, we're hanging on pretty regularly.
But it looks like the route that you are proposing was similar to the one we ran back in the nineties, early two thousands, Route Twenty, that came through the town.
Representative Whitman?
Thank you for having us. It's been fun as usual. Always great to have you. I love you. Uh, food is great. I got to eat a bit. Now, I'll tell you, um, I need you a lot less, but it wouldn't happen if you came here for dinner very often. And I can tell you, I'm waiting for a phone call from, uh, if you want, one of my daughters falls pregnant.
All right.
And, um, we'll just, we'll try to get the results. But anyway, if I ever say anything to Hope Mills, it's hard to drive here in the old days. I'm getting older. And I can tell you, my fifteen-minute drive from the entrance of Hope Mills to here was a nightmare. And, and so whatever I can do to help with transportation, I'm in. Because I think that would just open the guy's mind open. More people would just love living here. They already liked the community. I'm very, you know, I've been happy, uh, to have helped with a lot of the projects that you talked about. Um, the, um, the changes were fantastic. And we certainly can work towards some of those issues. We never know if we're gonna have any money either, like it generally shares. So thanks for having us. And have us again. Don't wait till the day before we put it in the budget. It better than, you know...
Hold for one.
Good, good.
This is the right move.
This is a precursor to twenty-five, twenty-six. There'll be more.
I think you'd be pleased to know that I two-nine-five's gonna drop you off a couple different places, about a mile outside of town.
I'm excited about that, too. It'll be a short trip. But, uh, I saw those plans when they were building and working for Fort Wright and, uh, you're good friends, yeah. And when that was coming, it's been one of the best things I've, you know, we've done in a long time for this very special year.
They're moving forward, moving forward fast.
Great, thank you.
Staff comments? Anyone need staff comments from anybody? What we adjourn?
Definitely wanna thank, thank our, uh, senators and representatives for the guidance and wisdom. Um, I look forward to maybe re-engaging next year, um, maybe to, if we re, um, engage these requests so that, um, that you put, get put in the cycle, um, properly. Um, but, um, um, I, I wanna acknowledge our current board, um, because they are working, um, doing a lot of great things, a lot of innovative things that we've never done before. And so I do think that by this time next year, um, we'll be in good position to be able to re-engage with this one, um, on this foundation that we are on. Thank you.
Thank you. Town manager, Chancellor McGlock. Notice that influence is not there anymore. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? On favor? We are adjourned.